Or Memorex. We are on?
Yes.
We are. We are calling the meeting to order at 6:42. The call, the school board apologized for the delayed start. We had a prior meeting that ran longer than anticipated. First order of business is to appoint a process observer. Do I have any volunteers? Excuse me. Holly has volunteered to be process observer. Thank you. Agenda adjustments.
If the board wouldn't mind, I would like to move up our announcement that you see under deliberation for the middle school's principal's position because that gentleman is in the audience and I'd like to get him out of here as soon as we could.
Are there any objections to such an agenda adjustment? Seeing none, we will do that. So that is the first item of deliberation and where do you want it to?
I'd like to take it up before we approve the meeting minutes.
So next. Just out of curiosity, does that in any way fall into this category?
You could say it does if you'd like to go there.
No, just do you have anything else besides that?
No, I just have correspondence, but no.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Because I was going to say for tomorrow. Then let us proceed as requested.
I'm going to turn it over for the first part to Gina who, as we know, conducted the survey and the whole search process and let her highlight it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Corey. After an extensive process, the search for the next principal of Hollis Brookline Middle School has completed. Thank you to the search committee for dedicating many hours to the process. Thank you also to the staff, students, and community members who offered invaluable feedback at the meet and greet. It's with great pleasure that I announce Mr. Timothy Gerson as the candidate selected for the next principal of Hollis Brookline Middle School, effective July 1, 2019. Currently, Mr. Gerson is in his third year as assistant principal of Boe High School. Prior to that, he served as assistant principal for three years and a teacher at Hollis Brookline High School for 11 years. He served both districts as a coach and club advisor. Mr. Gerson received his Bachelor of Science in Kinesiology and his Master of Education in Secondary Education from University of New Hampshire. He received a certificate of advanced graduate studies in educational administration from RIV. We are delighted that Tim, based on your approval, will be joining our SAU 41 leadership team.
First, I'd like to thank Gina and everybody involved. I think it was a very thorough search process and I think we arrived at an outstanding candidate and it's my pleasure to nominate Tim Gerson for the position of middle school principal beginning July 1, 2019 at a salary of $104,300 and a two-plus-one contract.
So moved.
Second. Could you tell us what the current budgeted salary is for that position?
The current budget is approximately just over $112,000.
Any discussion or questions on the motion?
Thank you to the search committee and thank you, job well done.
Let us move forward with a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Congratulations, Tim.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome back.
Please don't run.
You get to leave early today.
Well, thank you very much and thank you to the committee. At this point, unless there's any further comments on this topic, we'll move on to approving of meeting minutes. We have both public and non-public minutes from January 16. We'll start with a motion to accept, well, I'll just read the following amendments were offered to the public minutes, respelling of the name Caitlin. And amendment, page five, line 16 and 17 amended to read, "He noted that there were some items in that percentage which he personally believes should have been included in the relief and if they had been, the percentage over guidance would be lower." Sentence currently reads, "You must consider there were some items that were not included in that percentage which he personally believes should have been." Example, relief was provided. And on page nine, line 21, delete the word "that" following the word "dental." Could I have a motion to accept the public minutes of January 16, 2019 as amended? Moved by Cindy, second?
Second.
Second by Krista. Any discussion, comments, or corrections? Just seeing, was everyone present for that one?
Someone called in for us.
Yes. Okay. Everyone is eligible to vote. All those in favor of the motion to accept the minutes? Okay, it is unanimous, six to zero. And now the non-public minutes of January 16, 2019. Can I have a motion to accept as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Krista. Any questions, comments, or discussion on that? All those in favor? It is unanimous as well, thank you. And I am told we have correspondences.
I just want to update the board of a few things. I am in need of some signatures tonight. The first one is for the school warrant for those people running on the official ballot. We need board signatures there. Later on tonight, we're going to discuss the articles and then Kelly is looking for signatures so that we can post the official warrant. And lastly, also later on in the agenda, I need signatures for the security and safety work that was complete, just so we can file for reimbursement with the state. I also want you to make the board aware that Tuesday of next week, I will be at the planning board. We'll be just having our first discussion with the planning board regarding the turf field. The public hearings for the warrant articles that we'll discuss later tonight will be Wednesday and Thursday of next week. So we'll be going over those. And then March 6, we have a meeting with the conservation committee again regarding the turf field. And at that point, we should have more data to bring back to the board and kind of starting to move the project forward. I just wanted to make you aware of those variety of dates. That's it for correspondence.
Thank you. This time, we're going to open up for public input if there is any. Please state your name.
Mary Ann Shanley, Button Drive in Hollis. I think you made a good choice with Mr. Gerson. I think he'll make an excellent middle school principal. Yeah, well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, principal reports and athletic update. I'm going to shake things up a little bit and start with our student representative. She'd like to participate.
I wasn't initially planning on being here tonight because of a band concert. Oh, my. But it was canceled, so I will be able to provide a brief student council update. Nothing written, but we are primarily focusing all our efforts on Spirit Week, which is next week. This week's also Penny Wars and we're donating the money we receive to Nico Martin and his cancer treatment. Other fundraisers we're working on is Dancing With The Staff, which is something new. We've been looking for a fundraiser to replace Mr. HB and this is something brought to council by the sophomores, so they've been working on that and that should be coming up. And we also have a semi-formal dance in March that we're working on. For policy committee, we're kind of searching for a new idea and gender-neutral bathrooms keeps coming up and a lot of students have come to council and asked about it. So that's something that we continue to discuss.
Great. Any questions?
I have a question. Where are we with the gender-neutral bathrooms?
We're in the middle school.
Pardon?
We're in the middle school.
Seriously, because she talked about it a couple months ago too, so I'm wondering, is anything moving forward?
The student council has been working on that, reporting to Mr. Barnes. Mr. Barnes has been, I'll say, reviewing our facilities to see if we can identify some bathrooms that we believe could assist with this process. And I'm sure that once the student council finishes their work and meets again with Mr. Barnes, he'll be coming forth with some recommendations at some point in the coming months. Anything else to add, Rick?
That pretty much sums it up. We've identified some potential areas in the building that where we think it could work out and it's just a matter of finalizing some things.
Great, thank you.
Okay. See, you've got follow-on to yours, don't you, Rick?
Yes.
Start with Bob.
Sure, I just wanted to highlight one activity going on at the middle school and that's our C-Pinch program. So those of you who are not familiar with C-Pinch, this is the third year of this program. It's a partnership between Hollis Brookline Middle School, engineers from the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, and the Marine Engineering Lab at the University of New Hampshire. Basically, the engineers from Portsmouth Naval Shipyard come to HBMS over two days and they help our students build underwater robots. And next week, we'll travel to UNH where we'll take over the UNH pool and students will have an opportunity to try out their robot. They'll also get a tour of the Marine Engineering Lab and they also get to eat their favorite part, which is they get to eat in one of the mess halls. So I want to thank the time and effort that the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard puts into this. You know, they were speaking with students yesterday in the kickoff assembly and were saying they're in desperate need of engineers and they know that students in the Hollis Brookline schools are really committed to engineering. There's a lot of potential engineers and the ability for them to get into our school and work with kids on an engineering project and get them excited about engineering really helps, hopefully helps their cause in the long run of recruiting, you know, some of our kids to become engineers.
Thank you.
Great. My action item, you see there is the choir, proposed choir trip to Portugal in April of 2020. We are in the midst of course selection, so we're excited to be with that process with a new structure, moving it back to where it has always been in the past, like a couple years ago, and have that completed much earlier than we have in the past. And as Mary mentioned, where Spirit Week is just around the corner, it's always one of the best weeks of the year, right before February break. Very happy and pleased that they chose to donate the funds from Spirit Week to Nico Martin. And pretty short board report, that's all that I really have. I'm happy to take any questions. I'm sure there will be questions on choir. I was wondering if the board would be able to vote on the trip now as opposed to deliberations if it was a possibility.
What is the urgency?
It doesn't, no particular reason, just that it's up now and if we were moving through all the business and the warrant articles to have this off the plate, I was just offering that out.
The only reason I say that is past practice, as you know, has been to introduce something and not necessarily act on it until people have actually suggested.
Not a problem.
So we'll see how it goes.
Sure.
I just don't know if there was an urgency I wanted that factored in.
No, there's not, particularly.
I do have a question about the course selection process. Where or when in the process does class size limitations become a filter?
Once all the requests are in, at that point, we'll divide the sections up and then depending on the availability of teachers to teach those sections, that's where the sizes becomes an issue. So soon, I would say with it.
Timing-wise, the reason I ask is there has been, there have been multiple suggestions that we look at that policy again. Just in light of recent discussions that have taken place, I'm wondering how much time we have to do that without adversely impacting your process.
We would be looking at putting together class sizes probably either February break, as early as February break, or the first week of March.
Because there is no opportunity to do it without having to have a back impact on you.
Correct.
Also, I don't think it's been brought up to be looked at.
Well, that's one of the things that I was potentially going to ask.
Right, that's today, but when we had the conversation back in the summer, I specifically asked, is this a policy we need to look at? And the board generally said, no, we like the policy, we want to stick to the policy. So if we want to bring it back to policy, I have no problem with that, but I just want to be clear that it wasn't requested until today.
No, no, the requests have been fairly recent and I think have been triggered by budgeting process, some of the forums regarding the STEM Center and other discussions that have taken place recently.
Right, I'm happy to bring it to policy, but I just want to be clear that it wasn't.
I don't, I think this is a multi-month, multi-individual process. I don't see this as going to be something that we're going to be able to make a change to. And the budget was based upon this current policy. If we want to do something, I think we're looking a year out would be the only reasonable way to deal with that sort of change.
Well, my only thought was they're going to get into a position where they may have to make some decisions and it may have to do with staffing related to it and if this board were able to have had, give it some thought when they come back to us, it might help the process. But to your comment, Holly, I don't think it's anything that the policy committee has to look at in advance before bringing it forward. I think it's going to need to be a general topic of class sizes that will then potentially translate into policy work.
Right, I don't think the committee can look at this without having input from the board members to know which direction you'd want us to go. You might want the class sizes smaller.
Yeah, I'll.
There's also the issue of the credits and the policy credits as they relate. All these things are intertwined. It would be a big.
It's very multifaceted and I'm not in any sort of position to lean one way or the other. And I may have been somebody who asked a question, but I don't have, and I think it would take a while to put all of that together and it's not something we're going to do.
It might actually be a separate committee.
A separate committee would probably definitely in order.
That's all fine. I was just trying to understand his timeline. That was the nature of the questions because I didn't know if it was something that happened that that phase took place in February, in May, or in July.
I guess I'd like to give assurances to Mr. Barnes that I don't think there's probably a strong sense of the board, unless I'm overruled, that we're going to change the, we're going to change the class size policy sometime between now and the time that you need to be starting to assign kids. Because if I were sitting in your position right now, that would concern me and cause some level of angst.
Well, I think there may be, but we can differ and disagree on that. You want to move, O'Malley?
I just wanted to point out that the first payment is to be made March 15. So will we be meeting before then? Not that that matters, but I mean.
Well, we will be, but not to take that topic up, I don't think. I don't know whether we're going to have a reorg immediately. She's talking about payment for the trip.
That stuff's going to come up later tonight.
But I had asked him if there was any time urgency for it to be tonight and Rick had said no.
Oh, tonight, I meant the vote.
You meant, I think what Rick meant was.
He was trying to move it right now.
Right now. Tonight.
It's on deliberations we are voting on tonight, right?
I understand, but practice is generally to not vote on something the first time it appears. That has been board-established practice that we request that things that are going to be voted on be presented at a meeting prior to the meeting in which the vote is going to take place.
Okay.
Okay, anything else you wanted to cover on regarding the trip and stuff?
Everything's in there if you want to discuss it.
No, we can, just as part of the report.
No, I'm good.
I have questions about the trip, so now.
Okay, then we're going to be deliberating later on.
Okay.
Moving into discussion, surprisingly on time, the draft school calendar.
Okay, so I have submitted a draft that looks ever so similar to this year's, when we're currently in. It essentially has a professional day for teachers in November, the 5th, and it has a professional day for teachers in March on the 10th. It has the proposed graduation date, June 13th, and the last day including snow days as June 18th. It has the traditional start with seventh and ninth orientation the Wednesday prior to Labor Day and then all students start, you know, the proposal is that they would all start the Thursday before Labor Day. Any questions?
Yeah.
You know, I was thinking about this, the December break, just as it was this year, is a little bit longer because the 23rd is a Monday. And so in thinking about the 2021 calendar, I'm just curious for feedback, at what point does it make sense to go to school? So if it's the 22nd and 23rd, do we have a two-day week? Is that, you know, the direction for the next, the year after this calendar?
Well, that was sort of part of the question I have about the issue of the starting, 29th and the 30th, starting before Labor Day where Labor Day is so early this year. I guess the question is, what's the productivity of two days in that framework, either at the beginning of school like that and then going on a three-day weekend?
We've always done that.
We've always done that. I actually think it's a.
We don't always do that because oftentimes Labor Day is later in.
But we always go to school for two days and then have three days off.
Last year, didn't we go to more?
This has been, you know, since I was a teacher.
So how well does it work?
If you ask me, you know, I've been in many different districts. I think this is a really good structure to have, especially with that Wednesday as an orientation day. It gets you back into the building without it being a five, I mean, you can argue differently, Bob and Rick, but without that five-day, very long week, it's like a slow, easier way back into the real world of school. Maybe our student representatives.
For those three days?
Yeah.
I would say it's very good.
Most people back before.
Most people are back, absolutely.
Rick, how many kids do we have involved in fall sports?
That's our biggest, that's our biggest season.
Couple hundred.
Generally, over 300.
Fall sports start mid-October.
Over 300 usually.
So coming into school on August.
A lot of them already started.
Eighth or ninth is not such a big deal.
From a student perspective, I think it's a really nice, like, thing to have that two days, even though like maybe it's not the most productive, but like we get our, like the list of materials we need, we get to meet our teachers, other students, especially for new students, either transfer or freshmen, it's a really nice way for them to kind of ease into not only school again, but the building and new environment.
Yeah, I would agree with that, particularly for our seventh graders transitioning in, having that half-day orientation just for seventh graders and then two days, you know, before the long weekend, I think is great. If it were up to me, I wouldn't mess with it.
I completely agree. Because it's just a way to iron things out and go through kind of all the motions and make sure everything works, for lack of a better phrase, and be able to make any corrections, you know?
So as a parent, I'm not a fan of it, but as a board member, I think it's necessary to start before Labor Day. And I also look at our whole calendar and I think if we were to start after Labor Day, we might have to look at removing like February vacation or April vacation in order for us to get out by June 18th. So we have many people, constituents, who will say to us, I have people stop me and say, I don't want to start before Labor Day. I have people say, I don't want to end after June 15th. I don't want you to give up February break. I don't want you to give up April break. So I feel like I'll vote for this calendar the way it is, but as a mom, yeah, I would love to start after Labor Day.
Well, just to your point, that brings up the question of December, because you could trade two days here for two days there.
I think Gina's question earlier, I think you go to school if you have Monday and Tuesday, but I don't think you go to school if you have Monday.
I mean, I feel like if there was that Monday.
And I think the elementary schools, I mean, I like to try to keep consistent with the elementary schools. I think the elementary schools will have a really hard time maintaining kids for that one day and I think we should probably just have consistent Christmas break.
There's no numbers in there, so I'm.
Yep, so for this year, the 23rd is a Monday? Or for this proposed calendar, the 23rd is Monday? I was just asking as I develop the next year's tentative schedule, when it's the 22nd and the 23rd.
Yes, I don't think I'm speaking as a board member right now, but as a parent whose family all live, you know, somewhere in the Midwest or Texas, none of my kids have ever attended Thursday or Friday before Christmas break, partly because we go to school so close to the holiday. So I think this buffer here is completely appropriate and I would actually, I thought what you were headed to was to get, let us have the second and third off so we would have two full weeks, which is the Midwest-southern way of doing Christmas. And if somebody wanted to make a motion to do that, I would be perfectly happy and I think it makes no difference at all whether the last day of school is June the 18th or 19th, they both stink.
They have to go to school.
I know, but I think I would, if I had to trade my two beautiful weeks of Christmas and having the weekends protected, I would let my kids go to school the 19th. I think it's a great trade. It gives parents and families that want to, you know, do something extended at Christmas time a lot of flexibility. I just, I'm sitting here, I can't figure out where we would grab that other day other than taking one of your PD days and I've tried to fight you for PD before. So I won't, I won't battle it, but I do think the 19th is no big deal.
The way you're doing is you dropped down to 177.
I could, I mean.
Well, the difference is in the Midwest, they don't have February and April vacation. They have one spring.
One week at Easter is what we always had. That is a completely true statement. I just know that Christmas travel is traditionally a problem, not such a big deal when your kids are in elementary school, because you just take them out because the kids are, they miss the last Christmas party, no big deal. It becomes a bigger deal when they miss AP Bio test, you know, on the Thursday before Christmas. The Friday before Christmas is usually a, the very last day is usually some kind of an event in your building, Mr. Barnes, like a party kind of atmosphere. So it's usually the day before the last day that we have to really worry about.
I support the calendar as is.
Mary, did Mary.
You don't have to keep your eye wide. I see it, go ahead.
I was just wondering, what week is midterms? I don't know if that's a question for you or.
Boy, that's a loaded question, Mr. Barnes.
Because I know this year it was the week before Martin Luther King Junior Day.
Usually it's the week after Martin Luther King Day, yeah. That's a good curriculum question, isn't it?
I do feel like that kind of ties into this conversation because without the long weekend, it's kind of harder for students to study without, to plan ahead and be able to study over break and having that built in time would be very nice.
It appears as though the January 21st, that four-day week, is immediately after the 18th week, so that would make sense to keep it there, but I think you try to balance out snow days and all of that and try to keep the quarters equal.
But I also think you're going to see, based on the feedback that was solicited from families and students, I think there's going to be some, not huge sweeping changes to midterm week, but some pretty good tweaks that I think people are going to be in favor of.
So Gina, you think they're going to be the week of the 20th, the way you're counting?
Well, it's Rick's decision, not mine.
Well, I mean, the way you were counting though, to make the quarters break.
Well, I think that's, if I recall, that's typically how it's done. You look at the number of days.
This week, this year was early, a week earlier than normal. Which I do think had that impact.
Are you talking about changes to the total number of days impacted for?
No, not. Yeah, I say nothing substantial, I'm not altering the weeks significantly, it's more how we approach it instructionally leading up to.
Okay, so is there anyone who wants to make a definitive change, recommendation of a change such as the one that, the one for the second week of the winter, of the holiday break? That's the only one that seemed to have some traction, potential traction in here tonight.
To do that, we'd have to ultimately reduce one day of the calendar?
Are we the first ones seeing this or has it already been voted on everywhere else and it doesn't matter?
Are we the first ones seeing this, or has it already been voted on everywhere else and it doesn't matter?
Nobody else.
No, I'm just wondering if, whether we should leave the administration with a suggestion to seriously try to make that a possibility.
I mean, we could always, instead of the 18th, the last day, we can say that the 22nd is the last day.
Yeah, that goes-
Well, but you never know, based on the snow days. It could, we could have four snow days. And then Friday would be the last day.
Yeah, but I've seen that calendar before when we end on a Monday. It's always a fiction. It's always a fiction. We never end on a Monday.
But the last day isn't, isn't considered, isn't that an extra day anyway in terms of what gets done for students?
So-
I thought that was like an exam makeup day?
For the high school.
Oh.
But not Kedah.
Is this schedule light? Okay, in past years, we've had a slightly different schedule in other schools. Thought they'd fewer days.
No, this is the, this is the, basically the same calendar we're running this year and the last couple of years. It has to still go to Brookline and Hollis for feedback. So we'll be back again in March with it, but we just wanted to get it out on the table.
So I guess, I guess the request is, could you please prompt that discussion?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Is the Tuesday, November 5th, is that because there's some kind of election stuff going on? And we, why is it not a Monday or a Friday to tie in? We did that one time before for college visits, for different things.
Yep, so it's not an election year, so that could be moved.
Those, yeah, the Tuesday days are just difficult, I think, not tying it in if we don't have to do a Tuesday off.
Two years, well, the 17, 18, 17, 18? Last year, last school year, we had, I think we had it backed up to, was it Thursday? And then the Friday was Veterans Day, and then, so that became a four-day weekend for families.
We can make a note, Cindy, and look at that and have that same type of discussion with the other boards as well.
I mean, honestly, the elementary schools might want it to be November 1st because it's the day after Halloween. And that, a long time ago, we used to have a professional day on November 1st. And that would be a Friday, a three-day weekend, and it's really hard for teachers post-Halloween. Not in the co-op, but in the elementary school. We used to have November 1st off as a professional day every once in a while. And it was a relief as a family, like a family.
We will look at that as well.
That looks like a pretty easy slide.
Thank you for your feedback.
We're so much fun, aren't we?
No, it was not.
Okay, I think we're set there. We can move on to the security grant update.
I'll take care of that. I'm going to send around a double, I need signatures on two sheets, but in your board packet, Kelly had provided you an update on the Public School Infrastructure Fund. First, at Hollis Brookline Middle School, we had security cameras installed and window security film done. It was a total estimated cost of $37,500. The actual cost was $37,450. The district portion was the 20% that Kelly had informed you about when we applied for the grant of $7,490. That comes out of the general fund, and the state will be reimbursing us for $29,960. At Hollis Brookline High School, we did the window security film. We had estimated a total cost of $12,050. It came in $11,877. So the portion for the district, the 20%, was $2,375. Again, that's coming from the general fund, and the state reimbursement was $9,502. Total added value to the district was $49,327. Total cost to the district was $9,865. I'd like to thank Bob, Rick, and Kelly, and everybody else who was involved in working on this project. One of the things Kelly was able to do is, we did security film across the SAU, and were able to substantially lower the cost by having all our schools done at one time by one vendor. So I want to thank her for that. I'll gladly take any questions. By then passing around a form that we send back to the state for our reimbursement. It is two pages, and a signature is required from board members on each page.
Could you just comment on what the security film is and does?
Yeah, the security film was installed on all the first-floor windows, and it doesn't allow a person to see in, and it makes it much more difficult to break that window. So if I came up with a baseball bat or a hammer or something, I'm going to be there hitting that for a number of times, and you can't physically see if students are in the classroom or not in the classroom.
Is it tinted as well?
It is tinted. It's kind of a, almost a T and A effect.
I'm just wondering if it affects the energy?
Yeah.
I would say there's a slight energy value, but nobody will sell it to you for that reason. It's definitely more about security, but I think there is a little, the glare, to be the way I put it.
Any other questions? Now we move into district meeting planning. I'm wondering if we should do the petition warrant articles. Put those too, because I'm wondering if that would affect the planning.
Sure. But you'll also notice that I have basically petition warrant articles, an update on petition warrant articles there twice. It's only one topic. I am recommending the four following petition articles, which Kelly has listed, and I will need signatures on this document, as Article 11. Because there is a possibility that Article 1 will be defeated or that other considerations result in the space created by Article 1 not being adequate or available for the Hollis Brookline High School robotics team, to see if the school district will vote to raise it appropriate the sum of $550,000 for the purpose of funding a facility for the Hollis Brookline High School and the Hollis Brookline Middle School robotics team. Funds to be transferred at the Hollis Brookline Robotics Boosters for the purpose, for this purpose, and it was submitted by petition. Article 12 would read, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 32:5-B and implement a tax cap whereby the governing body, our budget committee, shall not submit a recommended budget that increases the amount to be raised by local taxes based on the prior fiscal year's actual amount of local taxes raised by more than 2%? That is submitted by petition, and that would be done at the annual meeting. I just want to alert people that is a ballot vote. Article 13, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 40:13, known as SB 2, to allow official ballot voting on all issues before the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District on the second Tuesday of March, submitted by petition? That actually goes on the official town ballots in both towns. Article 14, shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 32:5-B-B, requiring that the annual budget, all special warrant articles having a tax impact, as determined by the school board, shall contain a notation stating the estimated tax impact of the article? The determination of the estimated tax impact shall be subject to approval by the governing body, and that was submitted by petition. I'm recommending all four of those be added to the articles. And I also noted earlier in the meeting tonight that we have public hearings scheduled for those articles as well. And I'd be happy to take any questions on that.
The one that you just identified as 14 for the tax impact statement? I'm a little confused by that last statement. Determination of the estimated tax impact shall be subject to the approval by the governing body. Is that the budget committee for the co-op, or is that us?
It, it says, the tax impact in line 2, as determined by the school board, shall contain a notation stating the estimated tax impact of the article. The determination of the estimated tax impact shall be subject to the approval of the governing body. I think when we talk about budgets, being a budget town by law, I believe that would fall to the budget committee. I would also note that when we have public hearing, those estimates are always provided as we go through. So it's something we've been doing in practice. This is asking us to put it on the actual notation, so when this is published in the town reports, citizens would be aware of that.
But the way this is worded, the school board would have the responsibility of putting on a warrant. Therefore, we would have to get it from the budget committee and take ownership and approve that number.
Correct. And I would see that as part of the public hearing night, because during that process, the budget chair presently presents the article, then gives the estimated tax impact. I think it would be a process of when we approve the article and make our recommendation, we're also supporting what the estimated tax impact would be.
Or potentially changing it if we think it's-
Correct, correct. It would be totally subject to the school board at that point if they felt it needed to be changed.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure people understood that that one was on us, not strictly on the budget committee. How would you, what's your preference as far as proceeding? Right now, we're in discussion. Do you want to wait on deliberation?
We can. I only have a quick field committee update, which is some of the same information I've done, but we'll be there before-
We've got to go to district meeting.
Right, so we can definitely go to that next.
Okay.
Just before we open up for discussion on district meeting, district meeting planning. I'm meeting with Mr. Drew Mason, the moderator, tomorrow. We have our annual meeting. We will go over everything from number of chairs, to bleachers, to the screens, to the audio, the visual. All of those things will be discussed. And Tom and I had talked and just wanted to make sure if there was anything else that board members wanted to see at the meeting. I think as Drew stood at the podium at our last meeting and discussed, you know, it's his intent to be working on the articles by 7 o'clock. It's our intent not to really start any new article after 10, but finish what we're working on. Obviously, the second night, the goal is to finish all the articles. As we noted in reading through the petitions, we have a couple more that will require ballots. So that means the ballot box is open for a minimum of an hour. But Drew and I will discuss those, and I'll try to get some information out from our meeting tomorrow. But I didn't know if there was anything else from your vantage point, from last year's meeting or other things. I mean, we'll change the ballots as was suggested. Those have been printed, and Drew has those. We've changed the start time to 6:30. We are working to expedite all presentations so that we're, you know, basically at 7 o'clock, we're working on the bond article.
The only other feedback we got last year was regarding our slides and visibility. Do we have any plan for, I don't know, having printed versions or solving that problem, multiple screens? Making sure, maybe even testing the slides the day before so that we can, somebody can stand in the back of the gym and see if they can be seen? Because sometimes it's just a simple, like, what color you use, you know, like-
We will take all those under advisement. We'll talk with Drew, and then Gina and I will take it as an action item to talk with Rich Raymond. And we are also doing, again, the Vote is Guide. Gina is working on finalizing that. So we'll make X number of copies that will be available that night, so people can follow along with that. That will contain a brief description of the article, the article itself, and then the budget committees and the school board's recommendations.
What I would like to also discuss at this time is who from the board will be, or who from this group will be speaking to specific warrant articles? Case of Article 1, which is the bonds, who's going to be speaking or presenting regarding that?
I can speak to it. I can speak to it. I mean, we've split it up between the three of us in the past. If you don't, if the board feels like it should just be the board, then I could do it.
It's not the, so it'd just be the board. I think for convenience and continuity, it would be better if it's, if it's only one person.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't have a strong feeling. I just would like to know who it's going to be.
Hollies on the facilities committee.
Is it going to be a compressed slide set compared to what we've seen?
We'll work on that.
Can I also ask who's just simply going to, do we know who's going to make the motion the second?
I'm guessing I will move.
Okay.
Who, senior second.
Okay, and we'll just keep that?
Unless you want to do the other way around.
And we'll keep that consistent through the articles?
Okay. Article 2, which is the support staff contract. Would you like to speak to that, Krista? Article 3 is the budget, and that will be Darlene. Do you see any need for anyone from the board to speak directly to it?
I think from my standpoint, Darlene is very well-versed. And I think she would defer any questions that were board-related.
I just, I didn't know if she felt, if she felt there was any need for the board to blatantly support it.
Well, I think the piece is, I think this budget supports what we need for school next year. And I think a member of the board, maybe the chair, if you just said that, this, you know, the $23,113,302 allows us to, you know, maintain and in some cases reduce class sizes. Just a brief little description, then turn it over to Darlene.
Okay. So essentially do an intro.
Right.
So Tom, is that your turn?
Yeah. Article 4, what, did we reorder them?
No, this is, you ordered, you provided this.
Well, I have, I have this from an old meeting.
We have it from last week's.
I thought we moved SAU.
Article 4 is SAU. I have it here, Kelly sent it out.
I don't know that I got that.
No, it wasn't. Kelly just handed, she handed this away all of us so we could get signatures. We can work out this one.
Article 4 is the SAU budget. Do you want me to speak to that?
I would appreciate that. I think there's some dissenters who think that we're becoming top-heavy, and I would disagree with that.
I said I would disagree.
You're loaded.
Do you feel that it's important to clarify the, or preemptively talk about the additional, additional person? Okay. And then Article 5 will be the Athletic Trust. I can speak to that. Articles, if someone wants to, I'm doing, because most people don't usually want to, but I would certainly welcome if anyone would like to speak to it. Anyone want to speak to the Athletic Trust?
I'm good with what I'm talking about.
And then Article 6 is the Maintenance Trust. So this is 6. I guess it's me. Do I get the big eyes? And then Article 7 is?
Special.
Okay, the article, this is special. I'm going to need a little help on that one, just a little background of why it's 100 this year. Do we have a slide on it?
25.
25.
What's, what's this one here? What's the 100?
That's the contingency. That's the last one. We moved it.
25 is the 8.
This is 7, okay. On, on that article, when it came up in Brookline, and I don't know if Webb's going to do it again, but there's a, there's always, frequently the question brought up is, is that enough? If the question comes up, do you want the board to answer that, or do we want someone from the administration to answer that question?
I would say if the question comes up, I'm happy to answer it. If the question comes up, that always comes up about cat aid. Amy will be there, and she can answer that, or Bob is becoming well-versed in that himself.
Absolutely, okay. And then, so that 8 is the contingency.
So are you going to do the special address?
Sure. And the contingency, that's the one that lapses. Of, is there a slide of what? Of, is there a slide of what is in it now?
There's always a hundred thousand.
No, I thought we, I thought in Darlene's budget presentation, she said that money was being spent from it.
She had a slide. It was taking up, like, eighty-five, wasn't it, from some of the things? Was that the same?
No, that's, the one that was coming down was the Maintenance.
Was that the Maintenance?
Yeah. The Maintenance Trust. I don't believe we, I think that was the question that was asked at the Budget Hearing, is whether we'd ever used it, and in fact, I don't believe we ever have, but.
Oh yeah, what she said is if we didn't have the maintenance, it would have come out of that. Because it was a fire panel and stuff like that, which would have.
Yeah, so I don't think we've ever technically used that hundred thousand dollar contingency fund.
I think the year that we had bacteria in the water, which was the year before I came, we used a portion of it.
To buy water?
To do the water testing and cleaning.
No, we brought in truckloads of water, too.
Okay. But I think that was the time it was used. It was about twenty thousand dollars, is what I recall Darlene saying. But that, that is six years ago. So we haven't, this board has never touched it.
And then Article Nine is still cat aid. Oh, it's Special.
The Special Ed Trust Fund?
No.
It's this, catastrophic aid is no longer called that.
Got it.
So it's ability to access Special Aid, yeah.
That one.
Yeah.
The one that always gets no votes.
So it's a, it's a, it's not a formal name.
But usually not a lot of discussion either.
No, I just, I'm used to, I've got to be careful. Is it worth telling people it's formally?
We did that last year. It was the last year, was the first year it switched over.
Yeah, we did. It would have been changed last year.
The Special Aid Eight, but.
You might want to do it again, just because we're doing the Special Aid before that.
And then, does ten actually come before, well, here's the thing. If eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen are going to become board articles, then they'll all move up, and ten will become fourteen.
Not all of them are, because, yeah.
Right. SB two goes on the ballot, so it's not.
Okay.
And the other thing is, we could always make a motion.
Dent Center is not a board article.
In the meeting, or if you tell me you want what is presently Article Ten, which is to transact any other business, which may only come before the said meeting, we'll just flip-flop that.
Well, we haven't posted yet, have we?
We have not posted.
Are we locked into this order?
No, we haven't posted it. We got locked into.
Okay. Now, you, when you read them, had the, the one, the only one that's likely to remain a petition article as the first petition article.
This one is suited by petition.
Yeah, so won't that be the last one?
Before these three?
Copies of the petitions themselves?
You set that on.
Or the warrant.
Petition articles.
I know Diane needed them. She was looking for them. I'm not sure who had them.
You can change these two.
Right.
I agree with you.
And then the question is, does this come at the very end regardless?
We will, we will.
Does it come after petitions or before petitions?
It comes at the very end, just in case something else comes up.
Okay. So, so this will go to here, and this will go to the bottom. Okay. If, if the petition articles become board articles, who speaks to them?
I think the moderator just does what he traditionally does.
No, I mean, usually they allow the petitioner to present.
Right, and that would be the same thing, because we can notify the petitioners.
Okay.
You don't have to speak to them.
Well, maybe we want to.
Maybe we want them to.
Depends what.
I, why would we give up the, if we're, why would we give up the opportunity to speak first regarding said petitions?
That's a good point.
I would like to speak to all of them if no one else would like to.
Good point.
Are you opposed to all of them? Well.
Not the SB two one, but the rest of them, yes. So if somebody wants to take the SB two away from me, I would, I would yield.
Do we get to?
That one's going to be on the ballot.
Oh, I'm sorry. That one's on the ballot anyway. Yeah, you're right. No.
Yeah.
So, but, but the petition warrants, yes, I'm against all of them.
I don't know if this is the appropriate place, but I have some questions about, when are we going to take positions on the petition warrant? Is that later tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Apparently, I just voted, but I expressed what my vote would be. But if you would like for somebody, I would, I don't see why we would give up the opportunity to speak as a Board. And if no one else would like to speak, I would be happy to volunteer for that position.
I think Liz has a good point.
Yeah, no, we'll see where it goes.
But, but I guess that is a fundamental question.
Of course, if they don't end up on the warrant at all because they weren't filed timely, then.
Okay.
I won't be speaking.
Okay. Uh, where?
Field Committee, nothing?
I'm just looking to find which agenda I'm working on, because I forgot the last one. Okay.
I just wanted to let the Board know that the Field Committee continues to meet. We work closely with Teague and Bond. We have a Planning Board meeting February nineteenth here in Hollis, and then a Conservation Committee meeting March sixth. So I will be, Gina will start the SAU meeting on the nineteenth, so I can go to the Planning Board. And I will show up a little bit tardy for the March sixth annual meeting, so I can attend the Conservation Committee for the two field pieces.
I'm tardy.
I'm not sure.
What time's their meeting?
I think they are at seven, so what I'll probably do is, you know, either as soon as possible, or, or we'll have some internal discussions and figure out if there's another rising administrator who can cover the Conservation Committee.
I guess the question is whether or not you are going to make, want to make any kind of introductory comments, because that will take place pretty close to seven.
Right. And I will, I will work through that and make sure that it all happens, because I think it's important that I do make an introductory comment, but I just wanted to let the Board know there are some, a lot of conflicts coming up between meetings and public hearings and things.
Could somebody from your Facility Committee, who's not an administrative, go to the Conservation Committee? As a member of the Committee?
There's the potential for that. And the other piece is that we have been touching base with the Conservation Committee, and I'm not sure where we'll be there. Maybe we'll note in specific questions prior before the meeting.
Does that imply, then, that the members of the Conservation Committee will not be at our meeting?
No, it's the Planning Board, not the.
Conservation's the sixth, Planning's the nineteenth. The conflict on the Planning Board is the SAU meeting. The City is also a member of the Facilities, and we're going to try to sneak out of the SAU meeting to attend the Planning Board.
Okay, now we get to do the actual update on the Citizens' petitions.
Well.
Actually.
I think we can just move down to start deliberations, because as I said, I put them twice.
I mean, do we want to publicly review what the whole deal is?
I'd be happy to do that. We received four Citizens' petitions. And tonight, I am recommending that all four of them go on the official ballot. The Article eleven that I just read to you regarding the robotics piece, that was filed on the deadline by the calendar under the RSA, so that appears, no matter what, is a Citizens' petition. Articles twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, as we discussed with legal counsel tonight during non-meeting, came in for, prior to, before the posted date of February eleventh. When we reviewed the calendars recently, we realized that it was our error on February eleventh. But the recommendation, which I am supporting from legal counsel, is to put those articles on to the Board warrant article. I think it is in good faith that we do that. I think it was our mistake, and Citizens who worked hard to file these petitions should not have to worry that a mistake on op op would impact their petitions. The Tax Cap one is an item that is done at the annual meeting and would be voted on secret ballot. SB two goes to the school clerk, who puts it on the actual town voting ballot. And then the Tax Cap estimate is also covered at the annual meeting. So I'm supporting putting these on. I think we have worked very hard with our community to develop good faith and work together. And I think this is an opportunity to, again, demonstrate that good faith and move these petition articles onto the ballot, and we will be conducting the appropriate public hearings and things that go along with them.
So, the first order of deliberation, well, I guess, does anyone have any? The first order of deliberation is to see what action the Board will take regarding a proposed choir trip in April of 2020. First question I have is, does anyone object to taking action on that request tonight? Okay, great. Since there is none, let's see how our kind secretary has worded this. Looking for a motion to approve the request for a choir student's trip to Lisbon, Central Porto, and someplace else in Portugal, beginning Thursday prior to the April 2020 school vacation week, through the Saturday at the end of the April 2020 school vacation week. Moved by Melanie.
Second.
Seconded by Krista. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a bunch of questions. So, I'm, you know, I support all these different trips that we send, you know, that we offer our kids. But I have some questions, because this is choir. And a lot of the trips that we support are functions of clubs, like the French club, the Spanish club. Or they're done as an enrichment opportunity for classes that kids have maybe completed or are currently taking. So choir is a little different, because their kids are in the course usually for a year, and sometimes for four years. And so I want to know if the curriculum of the day-to-day is about preparing for this trip. And I don't know if you can answer that, but.
No, I'm sure they'll be doing rehearsing for the trip. I know in advance, because they are performing.
So they're performing.
We have a volunteer at the far end to comment on your question.
I don't know if, I can't really, I'm not.
Yeah, you're in, you're going to, band, right?
I'm in band, and it's usually the same process. Like, we look at different music all the time. And before the trip, usually we pick either the best pieces we've been working on throughout the year, or we introduce new pieces, depending on the trip. Right now, for our Disney trip, we're partnering with other schools, so we have separate music that we look at specifically for that trip. So it just depends on, I guess, who's going to the trip and also what music they've been working on all year, but it's always changing. So I don't think it would change the curriculum.
Right. I'm not, and that's really helpful, Mary. Thank you. I'm just trying to kind of wrap my head around it, because what about kids who can't go? So they're in class, and everyone's preparing for the trip, and they're preparing pieces for the trip. And those kids are participating in that, but performance is a big part of performing arts. I'm not saying to not go on these trips. I just want to make sure that we're careful, because when we're offering so many every year, and this trip is four thousand dollars, which is one of the most expensive trips that I've seen. And they're going to Orlando this year for almost a thousand dollars, and they went to New Orleans last year for seven hundred dollars. So families in this situation where this is, the curriculum's playing out, and it's part of the curriculum, and I don't know if you have to be in honors choir, and if you want to be in honors choir, but you can't go on these trips, does that impact your opportunity? They're just questions that are, have been asked of me today, and I wanted to ask them. I told you I was going to. So I just want to, I'm not going to not vote for this. I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that, because performing arts is a little different. It's not like, it's during school, it's after school, it's all these different pieces. And so I just, I'm concerned about kids who can't maybe, who technically can afford to go, because there's lots of families who might be able to afford to go, but may not choose to spend four thousand dollars on this trip. So that's my question. My call.
I'll attempt to answer it, if you want, if you'd like.
Sure.
Are you, are you concerned about students who can't afford to go? Or are you concerned that kids are, because it's not a required part of their grade. It's not if they do, they have to go to Portugal and they're getting graded on. That's not what's happening. One of the things that's playing out, and maybe this will help you answer your question, maybe not, but one of those things that's playing out in our music department, it's another great problem to have, is our students are in high demand. Choir in particular, in band, but choir in particular recently has been invited by professors to travel to Europe, specifically invited privately to go. They, I'm not in favor of that, because the trip, one of the trips is at the end of June and end of July, where you have a significant amount of seniors who've already graduated, and I just don't like that for a lot of reasons. And I don't want to establish that precedent. So they turn that, those opportunities down, which is kind of unfortunate. I don't know if they're going to be cheaper or not cheaper, but our kids are in really high demand, because whenever they're performing at any of these festivals, people are seeing them. They're like, you need to come do X. So it's an interesting dilemma to be in. The trip to Portugal, I think, is, in a way, trying to find something during the time that they can go and travel, because we've gone to Italy before. And, and performed there. We've gone to Montreal, which is obviously a lot, a lot closer. And it's, I think it's an attempt to get our kids out performing in other venues where they certainly will do very well and have even more recognition. We recognize the cost, obviously.
Right. I mean, I support that, and I, I'm not really, I think there's families who can't afford to do this, and maybe their kids don't take music because of that. There's a possibility that that's what's happening. I also think there are families who technically can afford it, but don't want to spend the money on it. So I just want to be conscious of that. Like, what is it playing out in terms of the curriculum? What's the day-to-day, if every day is about getting ready for Portugal, and I'm a kid who can't go to Portugal, what's my choir experience like then? Or what's my band experience like? Like, and how does that play out for that kid? And that's, that's my, that's my question. Yeah.
I feel like, at least, I'm not in choir, but for band, I know, last year when we went to New Orleans, I didn't go on that trip. But I don't think there was any performances. Did you go on that trip?
I was not on that trip.
But it's not, it's not as much about the trip, as much it is preparing the music and learning what you can from that. And kids that can't go on the trip, like, it's considered, but usually the rehearsals specifically for the trip are either after school or during calf lock. But when you're preparing the music, if it's music that they're selecting to play on the trip, then it's rehearsed as an entire group, so it's not just for kids that are going on the trip.
And a lot of their curriculum, they're basing their concerts, they run their three huge concerts throughout the year. Those kids are participating and gearing up for those concerts, whether it's the winter concert, which is very extensive, the spring concert, and the fall, they're all extensive concerts, quite long. So this is just an enrichment opportunity.
Would it be reasonable, not looking to the right of policy or something like that, but to make a request that any trip-specific preparation be done outside the regular class period?
I'd have to have that, I would like to have that conversation first with the teachers.
I'm not asking to make, I'm not asking to make a special request. I'm bringing it up.
No, but it's a very, it's a valid thing. If, if there's three months of preparation, and particularly in an art where there are very specific roles, perhaps without, without the opportunity for duplication, then you have to rehearse it, you have to write it and rehearse it for who's going to be able to perform it. And if that means that you've got a group of understudies, for example, who, who play second fiddle to, to, to the people who are going on the trip, that would be undesirable.
I just want some clarity on this, and I, I feel like maybe this is another example of, I brought this up, this totally different topic, but I feel like we are supposed to have a curriculum committee that works outside of the Board. Like, that's what I was told when I first started. We don't really have that. And I feel like that if there were a couple, if there was a curriculum committee where Board members sat, we could ask these kinds of questions outside of this meeting and get more clarity on what the curriculum of the music program is. How do these, how do these trips fit in? It, it wasn't just someone bringing this up to me. I was struck when I saw this. Like, I feel like I've approved a lot of music trips, and, and I have no problem with that. But if I was a, if my kids were in music, I would feel. But if I was a, if my kids were in music, I would feel compelled to want them to go on these. And I think at this point, I'd be up to over $6,000 in, in monies. Now, I also heard that there's a fundraiser for this, a potential fundraiser. And that's something that I think we need to talk about outside of this because having sat with the booster club, there's some real, like, there's some real mixed messages about fundraising going on, like, in terms of procedures and whatever. Because if music kids can fundraise for a music trip and robotics kids can fundraise for a robotics trip, but the athletics field, like, we have different things coming out from fundraising. So I just, there's a whole bunch of little red flags that came up to me. And normally I would have called you.
Fine. Thanks, thank you. This is discussion relating to a open motion. So...
Well, there is an interesting, I'm just looking at her point about curriculum. There really isn't anything on here. What are our students supposed to gain from this? How does it work into our mission? I don't know what the question should be, but I, but I think that...
There, I was looking at that too. There's a last page on here and I'm not sure that it was, it made it through. Looks like it was separated, but there was a rationale for the trip and it's not in your packet, so. But I can, you know, I can tell you verbally what it is. It's not going to be exactly what Mr. Barbosa wrote, but it is that enrichment piece of getting, allowing our kids to perform in other locations and being exposed to musicians, potentially a higher caliber, if that's possible, and I'm sure it is, in other locations, as well as broadening their cultural experiences.
It sounds like a great experience, so I'm not gonna vote against it.
Is there enough uncertainty in people's minds or questions? Think they would like feedback that we would like to table this?
Well, I don't think that we should table it partly because, I mean, it...
The balls are rolling.
The balls are rolling, the deadlines are there. I think what this is really doing is saying, there is a, a number of policy questions here, philosophical questions about what our fundraising, what our field trips are supposed to be aimed at, how many departments give on any particular year. There's a lot of questions that are interesting questions and probably ought to just be taken up at, maybe, maybe a policy is the place where it belongs. But I don't think that keeps us from making a decision today. It's kind of like the question about your program of studies and your enrollment.
Well, I mean, just if...
Things are larger than what we can handle in one conversation.
Yes and no. I will offer based on the, kind of, the concerns that I'm hearing. There is, the payment schedule on here, there is some flexibility with that. So, and I don't know how others feel, but we could certainly look to, we could bring it back in March, potentially.
I don't know if we're gonna have a March meeting.
Okay.
We usually do. I mean, I'm pretty dumbstruck at $4,300. I, that's, a, a large, I think a large number. And I'm not so sure that it's not the most expensive field trip that we've ever approved, maybe by, you know, close to a thousand? I think it's probably, I think there was one that was close to 4,000.
I don't remember.
Could I, could I suggest that since we have a motion on the table, we, we act on this. But what I've heard is that we need to kind of internally, first of all, have a more of a global discussion. How often will we go in? Why? What is our price tag? Because I, I don't disagree with some of the comments. If your child starts this as a freshman, you know, you're probably paying close to, you know, six, $10,000 by the time they graduate if you participate in all these. And it's, and it's very difficult to say no. So I think that would be my recommendation, that Rick, Gina, and I will, will grab some people and form a committee and start to look at the process. Maybe even look at our forms that we submit so that there's a definite, maybe it starts off with a curriculum piece rather than ends with a curriculum piece because that's what we're doing.
I think it started with clubs, and then...
Mary, you had something you wanted to contribute?
I don't know if I'm being repetitive, but I feel like the purpose of these trips, there's a lot of different field trips, like to UNH and different festivals. And I feel like it's just about exposure to music and opportunities to play in front of different people and kind of see what's out there in the music world. So I feel like these trips aren't what we prepare for in class, but rather they're kind of a showcase of that at times. But I never feel like, I feel like the last few trips have been not even half of the class is going. So it's never a focus on the trip itself or it's just brought up for logistics. Like, can this sheet be passed around the room to check off phone numbers? But we're just working on the same music all the time and it's never about who is and isn't going on the trip because the, the numbers usually aren't there because it's usually combined with other groups.
That's good to hear, Mary.
You good?
I'm good.
Melanie, you good? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the request for the trip to Portugal for choir. All those in favor? Rick, I will ask that you communicate with the, the folks involved that it is approved and we're, that's a done deal. But if you can relay these concerns and stuff and to the extent that it can factor into this trip, that would be great. And that, and what I'm talking about is just the concerns about impact, potential impact it might have on in the classroom. The, the stuff about how we do it on a grander scale and fundraising, we're going to have to address independently.
I will.
Also really urge your staff to submit these. This is not the first time we've seen a field trip request. That was basically something that needed to be done urgently and without the ability for us to have two meetings for it. We've just got to figure out a way to make them understand that, and that this has to come in ahead of time. So they really need to get it in probably 90 days before that first payment needs to be made. And I mean, this is kind of my indication if the next one comes. Without that sort of ability to reflect, my vote's going to be no for that reason only. It might be the only no vote, but it'll be there because I want us to have time to discuss it as a board and we're just not getting it repeatedly and it seems to be a field trip issue. Like, the, the field trips keep coming in too close to the time.
Okay. Okay, thank you. To see what action the board will take regarding policy IJOC. Volunteers for first reading, Holly or Gina?
I'll talk, speak to it, but do you want to make a motion first or do you want to speak to it first?
I would like to have the motion first. I can read the template for the, to, a motion to amend policy IJOC volunteers in its entirety by replacing it with a copy provided with the agenda. To further amend by replacing sever with severe as opposed to, excuse me, to, which is the correct? I know, but...
Or should it be sever?
It should be sever, okay. To, by replacing severe with sever on page two, number four, under Roman numeral one. And to accept the first reading as amended.
Set moved, Tom.
Second.
Okay, moved by Cindy, seconded by Holly. Holly, you want to speak to it?
Sure, so we brought this to policy because of a conversation that we had, I think, last spring about volunteers specifically as it related to athletics. And so we, it, it took us a while. It's really been studied mostly by Bob and by Human Resource Department at the SAU and really taking a look at our current procedures and how we implement our volunteer procedures, our SAU background check procedures. And then it's also been guided by some conversations we've had about the ability to release volunteers when we need to release them. Would you say that's pretty accurate? So these are the changes that we made. This is first read. Like, we need you to go back and read this and compare it and dig into it as well. We've been digging into it for a few months. And this is really Carrie and, I mean, the Human Resource Department's work within the SAU building.
Okay, I will relay one comment that I received by email from John, who was unable to attend tonight. Did you get it?
Um, I think something about the, instead of having it be...
Yeah, under item one, it says comes in direct contact with pupils. And it's been changed, recommended changes to change from on a daily basis to on a regular basis. And his concern is that regular is a too, too ambiguous a term. And I'm curious, what is, what is the correct intent there?
I think what, what John's comment is probably more accurate, which is to make it, you have to, can you read his comment, please? I don't have...
Yeah, he said, uh, he suggests perhaps comes in direct contact with pupils during school sanctioned activities.
Right, so that would make, that would be more specific and would cover probably more. Regular is a little bit of a vague term. I, I like his word matter.
Well, that, it bring, it brings up the question is, is this intended only to impact during school sanctioned activities? Or are there, is there another circumstance? Or is there any, any attempt in this policy to overlap outside of school sanctioned activities?
I'm gonna ask the administrators if I can think of an...
Well, I have a couple of questions. Do our folks who coach and are involved with crew and robotics and things, those are the two most obvious clubs. They're, they're not school sanctioned, if you will, but do they have to have...
Robotics is.
And isn't crew school sanctioned? So they're school sanctioned?
Then how do you...
What's the definition of sanctioned?
I don't know. I, maybe that's the question I'm really asking.
It's not under NHIAA, they pay separately and it includes people who aren't from HB.
They do go through the background check.
No, the, the point is, what's the word sanctioned? Because if...
I, I think you could say instead of sanctioned, recognized by us or some different word. But I think the key here is that all of those folks are going through the background check because they're going to be with our kids or kids in general. So whether it's a robotics mentor or a crew coach, they all come to the SAU, go through the background check and get approved by me.
Now, what if it's, what if it's a, an individual who coaches in a school sanctioned sport but also has private activities in the off-season? Do actions in that impact what goes on?
It's actually kind of a good question. I mean, because we definitely have, I think I can make a...
Actually, I shouldn't be talking coaches because coaches are not volunteers typically. Coaches are stipend positions. But, but someone who is active at the school activity and is also active in the non-school, other seasons, is, and I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but when we pick the wording...
So regular might actually be a better word because it keeps us...
I think regular is still overly ambiguous, but, but sanctioned might be too restrictive.
But number two says that these are athletics or activities as defined by the superintendent. Does that give us the answer?
Are these, these don't have to all occur. Any one of these are, are acceptable situations.
Well, I think in terms of the, what I heard from Holly is this would all be under the category of feedback for the next meeting. And I think Rick, Gina, I, and Holly can all start working on with Carrie. And Krista, thank you. She was off the hook. Better defining this policy and getting something to move forward.
Everybody okay with that?
Is there anything else?
No, figured the, the one person who can't make it is the one who can trigger the discussion and bail. Thank you, John, if you're listening. So right now, we have a motion for first reading, which basically acknowledges the receipt of the amended version and sanctions the continued efforts on it. All those in favor of accepting for first reading? Thank you. That's unanimous, zero. Now we are into deliberations on the petition warrant articles. Just out of curiosity, do we have a non-public?
We do.
We do or we don't?
We do not. I'll just read the article off of Don's notes. Citizen's petition. Shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 32:5V-B, requiring that the annual budget and all special warrant articles having a tax, a tax impact as determined by the school board shall contain a notation stating the estimated tax impact of the article. The determination of the estimated tax impact shall be subject to the approval of the governing body. And again, this was submitted by petition. Does the board want to do the three petitions together or do they, we want to do them each separately?
Separately.
So are we first voting to decide whether or not we're putting them on? And then are we gonna vote to see if we recommend them or are we voting to recommend?
Right now, you're just voting to put them on. And then we'll, then we'll go back and do a recommend round.
So we can do all three together?
Are we recommending to put them on as, with the added wording submitted by citizen petition, but as board articles?
Yes, submitted, I think submitted by petition says, well, what would the board...
Well, the first one is an actual, I mean, that one that...
Not the one he just brought up.
No.
He's, he's doing...
He's only bringing the ones that...
This is the one for the...
Tax cap. We're bringing the three that...
Does, does the board want submitted by petition, approved by board?
No, I think I would like it to say submitted by citizen's petition. That's what I would like it to say.
Okay.
Because our vote will say whether it's approved, right?
Okay.
Yeah, well, that will, that will be, we'll take, and then we'll take position by...
If you put approved by board on there, people will be confused.
That's fine, I, I, that's a great clarification. I, I'll make that note for all of them, but...
By citizen petition.
Right.
So could I have a motion to, what's, what is the actual, what are we actually...
Place it on the warrant.
Place it on the warrant for cop district meeting.
Still moved.
Moved by Melanie, seconded by Krista. Discussion.
Are we gonna do all three of them together?
No.
So we're not?
No. Because I'd like to be able to discuss them individually and not get confused on which ones we're discussing. Because...
Are we discussing the merits of a petition or are we discussing just whether or not we should put the petition on it?
Well, the, the first motion is just to put the petition on. Then, then we won't, then we'll discuss the position on the same one. So we're, so when, once we're done with it, we'll have moved it on, taken a position, then move to the next one.
Okay.
So is there any discussion on whether or not to put it on the warrant? All those in favor? Opposed? It passes five, one. I'm sorry, Krista, were you the one who seconded? Okay, now, so it will be on, now it's taking positions. And that'll be in the, that'll be a, a vote, but do we need a motion to take position?
You're just gonna vote for any article, whether you're recommending or not?
Okay, but I'd like to have a discussion on the recommendation.
Yep, so is, I'll read the article again.
I don't know that you need to. The question is, do you need, do we need a specific motion to take position?
Don't we just, don't we have to make, take a motion to recommend it?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's been a long, long... I have a motion to recommend...
Article 12. Or no, it'll be article 12, I apologize.
It's gonna become, I think it's gonna become 12.
I thi, I think if you just do the article...
The article...
The article referring to RSA 32:5B, this is the tax cap.
Tax impact.
Tax impact, sorry.
This is not tax cap.
Tax impact, yeah, which is different.
Oh, I'm sorry, then I quoted the wrong statute.
Did you vote on the right thing?
No, you didn't. You read the right statute.
Right.
Yeah, you read it right.
Tax impact is, well, according to, according to this, tax impact is 325V-B. The other one is, has no...
Tax impact is V-B.
Yes.
Tax impact is V-B. Tax impact is V-B-B.
Yes. And that's the one we're talking about now.
And I was up here with this one. But I don't...
Do you want to change your vote, Liz?
No.
Okay. No, I just, I...
No, they're gonna be the same.
Okay.
I'm going to be consistent.
Question.
Yes.
I just want clarification. Are we still on the first amendment?
We are still discussing the first article.
Article, which is tax impact.
Tax impact statement being put on the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
And, what? Yes, you can.
Yeah, oh, Mary.
Unless you're having fun.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your help.
Bye, Mary.
Yeah, thanks, Mary. That was really helpful.
Yeah, of course.
Um, the, the, this is something that we put in many places. And it used to actually be put into the warrants. And I'm not sure why it was stopped. But in past years, the objection that has been noted is that the, uh, the tax impact is not fully known at the time that the warrants are posted. However, we, we show it at the hearings and we show it in many other places. And I actually think would be beneficial and perhaps cut down on some of the misinformation that's distributed where people post things, move decimal points, or heard a rumor and got something confused. If it's actually written in something that we put out and post, uh, for better or worse, at least it's as accurate as we're able to be at the time. So I think it's, um, would be a positive thing to do.
I have a question. I mean, what does determination shall be? I mean, it's already determined, so why does the governing board have to vote on it? I'm, I'm, I'm confused on the last sentence.
Dad?
Because that's not, I mean, we put it in on the slides, but that, that doesn't, this is saying that they get to vote on the estimate.
No, that's we. Governing board is us.
You're the governing body.
Because we're the, we're the ones who have to actually put it on. But we don't own the, this is just the way, I think the way the RSA is written.
Okay.
So it says it's not an individual person who maybe have prepared the budget and submitted it. It's gotta be the board as a whole said, yeah, that's the right number. Um, in this case, it's a little bit more complicated because we don't prepare the budget. We would get the number and we would have to agree that the number that the budget committee presents to us is the correct tax impact or correct estimate. Or at least one that we agree, agree on. But it's, it's us who has to, uh, has to put it on the warrant article. Or at least agreed to. Krista?
Um, I very rarely disagree that more information is bad. And I'm not saying that it's not. I just want to be careful because, um, we build our budgets. We don't build our budgets based on tax rates. And I think we have to be careful. I want people to look at our budgets and I want people to look at spending based on the spending and, and the budget and not strictly on the tax rate. I want them to think about it. And so I worry sometimes if we put it on the warrants prior to the slides, that all that's going to be seen is the tax rate and not necessar, and, and tax rate, we don't have control over tax rate, complete control over tax rate. There are a lot of other factors that can come into play on some of those things. So I get worried that that could be information that people make a judgment on without looking at the whole...
It, it just doesn't even say tax rate, which might be better than what it says. It says tax impact. So we could, we could pass this, or the governing body could pass it that night, and then people might complain that we put, um, you know, we didn't put, they, what they really wanted was us to not just tell them the amount per thousand, but we wanted to compare it to the, you know, the $450,000 house in, in Hollis and the $270,000 house in Brooklyn. This, this language is so subject to argument because I don't even know, because tax impact doesn't have one particular meaning. It doesn't say tax rate. And we all know this is a mul, like, the tax rate becomes a multiplier. And if it was a year where we were going through reassessment, we wouldn't even know what it was in March, because it would, the way the dates line up.
But we always, it's always put up at the hearing and at the, at the meeting.
We know what the est, it's, but it's still, it ultimately is an estimate that Darlene is putting up. It is an estimate based upon the best facts that we have.
Right.
I'm just saying the words tax impact are subject to construction. And I doubt if we're going to be consistent in how people in our community construe those very loosey goosey terms.
You mean, so if, if you think if it said that this has estimated tax impact of X dollars and cents per thousand, in Brookline, X dollars and cents per thousand in Hollis, like we did with the, on STEM presentations of the 12 cents and the two cents, that that would be misconstrued?
I think ultimately, the impact of that is different. I mean, it, so it does. It, it...
But that's what the estimated tax impact is.
I don't think that adding it to the warrant is going to make it any more clear.
It's not a question of being any more clear. It's a question of putting it in another place. But...
Can I speak? No, I can say that regarding the field, people were saying that the reason why their tax bill was so high was because of the field. But if they saw what the tax impact was, then they wouldn't be saying that.
But they did see it last year on the slide with...
On the slide, yeah.
Well...
I, I think it's helpful to see that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Um, so we have a motion and all those in favor of recommending this article. Uh, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay. The board recommends this two, four, four against?
Does the wording have to say does not?
I thought it had to say in a positive, doesn't it?
Okay, just because the public hearing, Darlene said that the, for the STEM, said does not. What she wanted it to say does not.
But I don't think he's, I don't think it can. That's one point.
We can check on that. We've been talking to Jim and Melissa.
It, it's, yeah, it does, whichever way is...
I think we showed it on the warrant before, it's someone does not recommend that. I, I, I thought, I think, I think, I thought you had to take the motion in the positive. But you can say...
I'm, I'm not, I don't object to it. If it's permissible to say this, the board does not recommend this from, by a vote of four to two, I'm, I have no problem with saying that.
I see what you're saying.
I just don't think, I don't know if it's allowed to say that.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
I think what we went through...
Or just the board does not recommend.
No, I think it was, I think it has to be a positive motion and the vote needs to be reflected two, four. Which basically is a non, it doesn't make sense, but we've gone through this year after year. It has to be this bizarre way.
That was the motion that was made hot to pass. So it failed.
It was made a motion. It has to be a positive motion. And it has to come out, and it shows the way the vote came out.
Yeah, so it should be two to four.
Two to four.
All right, there we go.
I will read the, uh, next citizen's petition. Shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 32:B-B, excuse me, 32:5-B, and implement a tax cap whereby the governing body or budget committee shall not submit a recommended budget that increases the amount to be raised by local taxes based on the prior fiscal year's annual amount of local taxes raised by more than 2% submitted by citizen's petition?
So first you need a motion to put that on the warrant?
Correct.
That's correct. Anyone want, moved by Holly?
Second.
Second by Melanie. Should I call the ambulance?
Bridge of the beach.
Okay. Any, any discussion?
If I may, I would just, I do recommend putting it on for the, for the reason that we had a date discrepancy. And I think, um, the citizens would have adhered to the date if they had been provided the correct date by the SAU.
Do we have to take a vote?
Yes, we have to vote to put it on, and then we have to vote on the merits.
Okay. All those in favor? Five, one.
And I'll make a motion to, um, recommend the tax cap article for the warrant for March 6th, co-op district meeting.
So you can't, you can't motion ITL? It has to be, it has to be affirmative?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion by Holly.
That doesn't mean I have to vote for it.
Right.
No, you just, you just make a motion.
But someone's gotta second it.
Nobody's gonna...
I'll second it. Yeah.
I'll give it to Cindy.
It's fine.
I don't, I don't want to stress you out anymore than you have to be.
I'm not stressed. This is fun.
She loves this.
Uh, is there any discussion on this?
I have no comment.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 40:13, known as SB2, to allow official ballot voting on all issues before the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District on the second Tuesday of March, submitted by citizen's petition?
I make a motion to put that on the ballot, or put that on the warrant, excuse me, for the district meeting.
I have a second.
I want you to second it.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Jeez Louise, we're tired.
All those in favor?
Of putting it on the ballot, on the warrant.
Opposed?
You're just gonna vote to...
Say ditto?
Yeah, no. Now I make...
I announced it would be the same.
Now I make a motion to recommend the, um, SB2 article for the co-op district meeting warrant article.
Um, just to make sure everyone knows, this is, this goes on the ballot.
Oh, sorry. On the ballot.
No, no, it's, it's, it's still, yeah.
It's still part of the warrant. It just goes on the ballot.
A second? Who's gonna step up this time?
Come on.
I'll second.
Um, is there any discussion? Liz, do you, I'm just sort of curious.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in a bad spot. So, um, I am, I believe it was untimely and I would have not put it on the ballot for that reason. But for the reasons I articulated at the last meeting, I'm actually in favor of it being on the ballot. So to be consistent with my beliefs on this one, I will vote in favor of it, or I will vote, vote to support it.
Recommend it.
To recommend it, um, for all the, and I'm not gonna rehash it, because I think everyone who listened to me last time does not want to hear my rationale again. But for the same reasons I've already articulated.
You know, I just want to say that I heard you last week, Liz, and I think you made a lot of sense. And I just think that we need more time to be able to educate our voters and make sure that they understand that they need to come out and vote. You know, they need to make sure that that day is important. So it's gonna take some work on our part, I believe, not just at the last minute, let's do this. Let's change what we've been doing for, I don't know, 40 years. So it's my two cents.
I'm still not gonna vote in favor of this, but I have to say, I, um, I'm not sure if what's best for the kids is the co-op district meeting. Um, and I keep trying to think what's best for the students and what, what will ultimately bring more cohesion to the community? And is the district meeting really helping us bring that cohesion? I don't know. So, um, I'm gonna vote against it this year because I still am not sure. And I don't want to make a change in the government, in the way we govern, until I'm 100% sure. But, um, I'm pretty torn on this one.
I will say, I don't know, I, I, it's been a while since anyone showed me the data. But the last time I did see the data, there was indication that just on a superficial basis, the probability of, of capital bonds passing under SB2, despite the lower percentage needed to do so, is, was significantly lower. The main proponents of SB2 generally are people who are advocating for tighter budget control.
And I'm hearing you say, this is, I'm not really commenting about bonds. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying. I'm commenting about the ranker and the negativity. I mean, I sat here, I mean, we have to have public hearings, but the negativity and the negative energy. And I'm not a data person, Tom. I'm a feelings person. And I sit in that room and, and I'm not so sure. That's really great for our community. There's a lot of like...
Come to a deliberative session and that would, that would even nastier.
So, I mean, I think that's what I'm trying to figure out. But I don't think the deliberative session is the solution either. I think SB2 is this way of like trying to keep a town meeting form of government, but still have a representational form of government. And I think really, the answer is more have your representatives that you elect, put together a warrant, put it in front of the voters and let the voters vote on it. And that's what it's trying to do, but that deliberative session throws it off.
Well, yeah, the thing, the thing that we, we are finding in Brookline, deliberative sessions, and this is my personal opinion from, from watching it though, is that there's significant frustration that you come out and you have a lot of back and forth, some of it not particularly friendly in nature. And at the end, you can't do anything.
Right. I'm hearing you.
So, so I, I, um, I would encourage people who are interested in the possibility of it to come to some deliberative sessions. I'd say come to, easy ones to come to would be the Brookline. Milford has a very, very long deliberative session each year because people I know have known. I'd say go attend it and see whether you feel that it, it provides the functionality that you hope that it does. So, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I say the same thing all the time again. I think it's the purest form of democracy and I understand the deliberative session. But I also believe that, um, I, I will agree, not everyone that goes to the deliberative session, it's not the same amount of people to go out and vote. So again, the people to go out and vote sometimes aren't voting on the real information. And I just think it is best for the kids to have people listen to the information and to understand what we are attempting to do. Because I believe as a school board and I, I, having worked with all of you for many years, we make every attempt to do what is best for the kids, um, working with the administration. And it is not, there is nothing underhanded and nothing scheming in anything that we are doing. We are truly trying to do what's best for the kids. And we are respecting the taxpayers' money to the best of our ability because we are also all taxpayers ourselves. So I, I don't believe it's pretty all the time and it's uncomfortable sometimes, but I do believe it is the truest of, of getting the information and being able to vote in our small town. And we do live in a small town. So I, I get SB2.
Okay. And so we're right. Um, I actually agree with Melanie. I think a lot of it falls on our shoulders to try to educate people. We have a lot of new people. If you get on the Facebook page, there's constantly people moving in. I think sometimes the newer generation thinks that because they hear that they can vote all day, that they think they have some kind of options. But once it's on the ballot, they don't know that the deliberative session is before that and what comes on the ballot is the only thing that they can vote on. And I agree with Tom. I think it would be very frustrating to be able to, to go to a deliberative session and sit there all night and not have any outcome at the end of it. And I think that the, um, annual meetings, you know, as difficult as they can be, everybody in that room comes away feeling they either won or they lost, but at least they had a say.
Okay. Thank you all. Um, at this point, we are taking a vote on the motion to recommend... At this point, we are taking a vote on the motion to recommend the article which is going to be posted as a citizen petition submission to allow, to switch to SB 2 RSA 40 colon 13 voting, official ballot voting. All those in favor of recommending this? Opposed? So it's one, five.
Okay, this, this next one is only for recommend or not recommend because it was filed February 4th. The legal counselors advise us, the way it's written is not legal, but because it can be amended on the floor, that it's our responsibility to put it on. It reads, because there is a possibility that Article 1 will be defeated or that other considerations will result in the space created by Article 1 not being adequate or available for the Hollis Brookline High School robotics team. To see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $550,000 for the purpose of funding a facility for the Hollis Brookline High School and Middle School Robotics Teams. Funds to be transferred to the Hollis Brookline Robotics Boosters for this purpose, majority vote required by citizens petition.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend the article as read.
To put it on the ballot?
No.
We don't need to.
This is, this is the motion of our, where we'd be taking positions on it.
Okay.
If we don't want to take positions on it, that's fine.
I'll move that. I'm so moved.
I'll second.
Can we ask the question of which portions of this is illegal?
The funds cannot be transferred to a boosters organization or a private entity.
Makes sense.
If it passes, where do the money, they go in the general budget?
If it's, if it's amended on the floor, the money gets added to the, the budget and becomes the, under the purview of the school board.
What if it's not amended on the floor? What if it passes just as is?
Well, Jim will get up and say that it, it's not legal.
It's illegal, it's illegal.
Right, so it, it, that will be addressed by the moderator and the attorney.
Okay.
The money would come into our budget. It does not require that you spend the money or does not require that you spend the money for that purpose. Once the money's into the budget, it's the school board's.
Then let, then let me pray, ask a different question. Is it possible to expend money on something that isn't in the budget? I thought you couldn't. Because one of the ways to get rid of something is to zero it out.
Well, it's, it's a bottom line budget.
But I mean, there's nothing in the budget for building a facilities for robotics.
Oh, I don't, I don't disagree. You could get the money in your budget and it could sit there the whole year and you could return it to the taxpayers if that's what the.
But you could get it and spend it on anything you want that's in the budget.
Anytime money is added on the floor.
I could have my four teachers.
But, but I'm, I'm not asking, do we have to? I'm asking, is it, would we even be allowed to do what this says even if it was approved? And I don't think we would because there's nothing in the budget that had been voted upon.
Well, I believe.
Does, does voting yes on this then authorize the expenditure through the budget? This just says it.
Yes, you, you have the, it's just like.
Because it says appropriate, we can then spend on it?
Yes, because let's use the example, if we get to, it's the end of the year and there was something, there was surplus and the board wanted to purchase A, B, and C. They don't have to be in the budget. I have to bring them here, give you justification and then you can spend it on A, B, and C.
Even if it's, even if it's not a category that's in the budget, I thought you couldn't vote, do it in a category.
They'll, I mean, every category is funded because this is, this would fall into facilities. You could say this fell under maintenance. I mean, there are a variety of ways you could look at it.
I, I would think that, okay, okay.
What if Article 1 does pass?
They still, this, this is still in it because they're saying, it says will be defeated or that other considerations result in Article 1 not being good enough for them. So.
Potentially you could have $3 million to play with.
Potentially, I, they, just at the public hearing, they did attempt to withdraw it. It's not the place of the public hearing, it's not the place here. But that motion could be made at annual meeting and the legislative body would decide that.
Okay, can I comment on it? So I spent a lot of time, past two years, working on plans for STEM Center. And I support robotics. I think it's a great program, I think it's really good for our kids. One of those students last year brought me to tears. But this is not the way to, for robotics to get what they need. And this, there's no way I could support this. That's it. Short and sweet.
Anybody else want to speak before we vote?
I have a question. So when you speak on this warrant, will you also say that they tried to pull the warrant?
Well, we won't speak on this.
Oh, okay.
The petitioners.
They will have to.
So they will have to say? Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm saddened, disappointed that this came forward. We've had a two-year committee process that included folks from robotics and this feels like it's an undermining of the hard work and the diligence of those committee members who brought forth a project that was much broader than robotics alone and really met curriculum needs of approximately, you know, 850 to 900 students at the high school. And it's a project that we desperately need. And what I would hate to have is the detractors take this and misconstrue this as the board asking for a multiplier of what we really need when we need the classroom space with the numbers that we have coming in every year. It's not a surprise that our numbers are higher the last, like several years in a row, our enrollment numbers are higher than anticipated. And I'm just very saddened that I think the people that we should have put in partnering with would have brought forward with something that will give the dissenters an argument against us.
Any other comments or discussion? Thank you. Seeing none, we will now vote. This is a, taking a position on the proposal on the, on the warrant article. So yes means you support the article, but it's not about having it on the ballot. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes not, zero, six. We don't support. So, yeah, and if you could get clarification on how that wording, Liz and I are pretty sure that it has to be the awkward way.
It's that awkward, double negative.
Like the town meetings and stuff, I think, I'm sure we've seen stuff that says does not recommend.
Well, I, what I've, what I've heard is that they, that they read it as they, so-and-so does not support it, but I'm not sure that the actual wording on the thing says it. Have to go back and look at some of them, but. Okay, that concludes the discussion on petition warrant articles, correct? And if you wouldn't mind, before actually sending it out, I mean, posting it officially, if you could just circulate what a complete article lists and what the wording is, that would be really appreciated. Doesn't say it here, but is there any other business? This is, this is potentially our last, our last meeting before the, before the district meeting.
Before the big party? Before the big party?
Yeah, well, the big party's next week.
Is there a way for us to get the slides that are gonna be presented that night so that we don't have to try to download it in the internet of this school? Because we, I mean, I, it's always behind us, so I just like to have them in front of me so that I can see what's going on.
I will talk with Darlene. Darlene often doesn't, she volunteers to put them together and that result is it's not done until five o'clock of the day, but I will.
I mean, I know some people that kind of freaked last year when they saw 77 come up, when they finally got them downloaded.
We can talk with that and could you bring out a pretty conversation through? Is Darlene meeting with you?
But I would definitely email Darlene, I'll try to put you on too.
Yep. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that I rolled up the, our district's evaluation data and submitted it to Erin on our meeting next week, which is, I believe Wednesday night also?
Tuesday night.
It's Tuesday.
She hopes to be able to give at least a preview of the raw, the raw data. We'll have a, a non-public end, but it, it will also potentially be the opportunity for us to provide input for the final configuration of that, that document. So I encourage you to participate if you're available. Could I have a report out by the meeting observer?
No, I'm sorry, I was putting in my calendar. I think we pretty much were, it's eight, we were supposed to finish at 8:30, it's 8:40. We had some interesting discussions and we were pretty much on time all night. We went a little long at the non-meeting and we spent more time on the calendar than I think you anticipated, but I think we're good.
Great, thank you. One more motion?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn. Motion by Melanie, second by Krista. You'd get credit.
Well, Gina always, oh, Gina always thinks she brings that calendar, it'll be like.
8:43, the meeting has concluded.
And every time you bring it.
Thank you, Mark.